Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for your patience. I do understand that we're running quite behind and we had a student discipline hearing and we making very difficult decisions that we take very seriously. So that's what that's about. We appreciate your patience and your being here tonight. I'm going to go ahead and reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Can I have a board member certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that-
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Ms. Mills?
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
And now if you would please stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Mr. Hosang, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. I will turn it over to Dr. Kiefer for Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are excited. I'm hopeful that we see slides begin to magically appear on the screen. How about that? We are excited this evening to share a couple of items. Last week, twenty-plus volunteers from across our community brought the love of reading to second-grade classrooms across the school division. Reading Revolution was part of a statewide celebration, VA 250, and it shared, and our shared responsibility to foster a love of reading for all learners. We believe, I believe, this is particularly well-aligned to our Elevate 28 focus on literacy. We look forward to continuing that enthusiasm with our Learning Through Literacy event tomorrow evening. That has been changed location-wise from the Williamsburg Regional Library to Matthew Waley Elementary School. There's been a lot of conversation in our community about the importance of literacy, and frankly, as a board and a leadership team, we know that there is work to do and we're not yet satisfied. So we will continue at it and look forward to partnering with people in order to bring about enhanced reading scores for our young people. On Friday, June, excuse me, on Friday, October 10th, the school division, the city, the county approved a resolution to enter a funding contract for joint operation that took effect on the 10th and can't be modified before January 1st of 2030. It was an important day for our schools. It was an important day for our localities and, you know, more broadly for our community. The school board is now a party to that contract. There are some key points that I feel like is important for us to mention. The new contract ensures additional investment from the localities whereby we know what we have from the localities for fiscal year 2027 in terms of planning. It also establishes predictable and planned annual funding whereby the localities provide initial budget information for operating costs to the school division in October of the year and hopefully sets us up for success as we navigate the budgeting process. At the same time, it establishes a third joint meeting specifically for the purpose of discussing student achievement data and to discuss strategies to strengthen outcomes for our young people. It simplifies capital funding where the city and county are responsible for funding capital projects within their localities. Both localities contribute to the capital expenses for shared facilities such as the administration building, operations, and by way of the joint agreement on October the 10th, Cooley Field. Previously, Cooley Field had not been a shared, a shared facility. With the specific mention of Cooley Field, we are reminded of the ongoing conversation around lacrosse and turfing. The community has indicated an interest to bring lacrosse to WJCC schools. One component of that will be the investment from our funding partners. Two of those other components would include regional competition. As early as last week, I had a conversation with some of our colleagues across the region, and that included the superintendent from York County. And also, we need to continue to look at bolstering our transportation infrastructure. Finally, I wanted to mention that the board is wearing orange this evening as a reminder to join with us tomorrow, October 22nd, in celebration of Unity Day as we stand up against bullying. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. And now we will hear a school spotlight from Hornsby Middle School.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Ellison is joining us tonight to share about a program that Hornsby students have participated in, first, starting as an extracurricular pilot, and now as an academic opportunity to learn from and with James Blaine Blatant students and staff. Dr. Ellison, welcome. We look forward to hearing about the program.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Kiefer. Hornsby is honored to talk about the future teachers of America. Affectionately known as the B Crew at Hornsby, this pilot program exemplifies WJCC and Hornsby's commitment to fostering leadership and community by providing eighth-grade students with meaningful opportunities to serve as mentors and classroom assistants for students at JBB. Through this application-based class, selected students demonstrate our core, sore, safe, organized, accountable, and respectful values in authentic learning environments. Our B Crew members not only support classroom teachers and enhance the learning experience for the younger students, but they also cultivate interpersonal and professional skills that will serve them throughout their academic careers and beyond. We're grateful to JBB for partnering with us, but we're also exceptionally grateful and honored to have Mrs. Maxey, our teacher, who is a leader in our school and a mentor not only to students but other staff members.
At this time, we'd love to have you see the video.
Roll the tape. Could we, could we reroll with more volume on the video, please?
The thing that excites me the most of B Crew is definitely being with the students and helping the teachers. I love helping people and helping with students. It's just really fun.
Hornsby is the only middle school in WJCC schools offering the introduction to teachers for tomorrow's program, which we lovingly refer to as our B Crew. Our eighth-grade students are prepared here to fully explore the teaching field as a career. For me, they learn communication, time management, and leadership skills, along with the fundamentals of teaching and classroom management. This opportunity allows our students to gain early exposure to the teaching profession and what it means to be an effective teacher. Right from the start, our students receive mentorship from experienced educators.
I do think it's really valuable to be able to learn from a real teacher. I'm able to like see it in action.
They are offered the real-world experience of working in classrooms at JBB Elementary where they assist and observe. It is an amazing program, coupling classroom learning with the hands-on practice of teaching and working with teachers. Our students here and at JBB are benefiting.
I'm learning a lot, especially about how to give constructive feedback to students and how they, and how they respond to that.
I've had the experience with B Crew the last two years, and it's been fantastic. It's kind of like the highlight of the day for them to get to have almost peers coming in to help out with work. to get to have almost peers coming in to help out with work. If they have difficulty with writing, they're getting in there, giving them ideas to help kind of spur discussions. The kids just love having them come in.
They get to try out teaching in real classrooms with real experienced teachers, professionals, who help them every day. They're seeing what's happening in the classrooms. They are starting to put things together. They're starting to ask questions.
Our hope is that this program gives students a clear window into the teaching profession, not just what happens in the classroom, but the joy of shaping lives.
I really like being able to inspire people. It's kind of like my motto, inspire. If I can start by helping out the younger generation and giving them a good experience when they're young, then they'll grow up to be like valuable members of society.
My hope for my students is that they can possibly see that this is such a rewarding career.
I knew I wanted to be a teacher when probably like fourth or fifth grade. I saw like all the fun activities they were planning for us, and I just always wanted to be that kind of teacher.
If this course inspires even a few of them to see teaching as a calling, while also equipping all of them with leadership, communication, and problem-solving skills they will carry into any career, then we have succeeded.
Are there any questions we can answer? Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation and video. Board members, are there any questions? Mrs. Hunley?
Yes. So I know before I was on the board, I worked with Teach for Class, and there were some students from JBB, so I was glad to see that the program has continued. And so they would be probably either juniors or seniors this year, the twelve that I met over at Hornsby. And I would be curious if anyone knows if they decided to go into education, because that would be super cool if they could come back and talk to the B Crew to say, "I was once you, and now I'm at school, you know, studying to be a teacher."
Actually, I have not looked into if any of the B Crew students have become teachers, although we do have some former Hornsby students who have come back and are teaching now in the building, which is quite uplifting.
All right, awesome. I'm glad it's continuing. It's a great idea.
Yeah, actually, now it's a high school credit-bearing class, so it's the only... We're piloting it this year. It is the only extra-high school credit-bearing class at the middle school level. So the curriculum is beefed up. The focus is on teaching and learning how teachers think and act and how to communicate with other students. Wonderful. Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you for your tremendous work. Thank you for bringing that to us and highlighting something that's really very special, and we wish you continued success.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to public comment. Over to Mrs. Donner.
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any audible demonstrations during the speaker presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated two minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair, and my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner, and I do want to thank you all again for your patience. I know many of you sat here for a while to come speak, so we are excited to hear from you.
We do have eighteen, so I'm going to call in groups of five, and you can line up and sit in some of those front seats there. Our first speaker is Elin Parm, followed by Susan Franz, Jay Everton, Stephen Nash, and Josie Schleicher.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Ordigo, Dr. Kiefer, and members of the board. My name is Elin Parm, a social studies teacher at Jamestown High School, a member of WJCA. And speaking as an individual, I do apologize, my voice is a little sore from teaching and talking all day long. I want to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation for the dedication and collaboration of our funding partners in coming together to establish a joint contract for our school division. This agreement represents a significant step forward in ensuring that we continue to provide the best possible environment for our students, staff, and the public school community. As we move forward, I am hopeful that this partnership will serve as a foundation for continued dialogue and constructive conversations surrounding collective bargaining. It is through open communication and mutual understanding that we can build an even stronger, more supportive school division for all. Thank you for your commitment to the success of our students and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parm.
Our next speaker is Susan Franz. Our next speaker is Jay Everton.
Thank you very much, Jay Everton. Back in my former life, I was an area manager for KFC. And I was up in the lightfoot unit, which is now a laundromat. And Suzie was there, and the report cards had come out. She had two Cs and three Ds. Now Suzie was, she's a smart, she's a bright girl. And I said to her, "You know, I can't put up with this. You got to get all these grades up, because I, or I'm going to terminate you, because obviously, school is getting in the way. This job is in the way of your school." Well, fast forward three months. She gets a report card, two Bs, three Cs. So I said to her, "I'm very proud. You got everything has improved. That's great." She said something to me that was haunting, and it's an issue for the school. She said, "You are the first person who cared what I did in school." About ten years ago, I ran into her at a parking lot, and she had just been promoted to sergeant in the local police department. Now, as you know, the marking period ends before the report cards come out. And in that period of time, if she didn't turn her homework assignment in, she would have the zero. And even if she found God after I threatened her job, if you will, it got two one-hundreds, that averages out to a D. Now, if she had gotten fifty instead of the zero, that averages out to a B. Now, I know we're not supposed to talk about people here, but you're, you made a good choice with Dr. Kiefer. You know, he's a smart guy. He does the work. He's doing God's work. Because here's the thing. With a fifty, with a zero, I should say, we put Suzie on the spiral of failure. But with a fifty, we could put her on the spiral of success. Thank you for your time, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Everton.
Our next speaker is Stephen Nash.
I'm Stephen Nash, and I came to the September board meeting and told you about my experiences trying to volunteer with the athletic programs at the junior highs and the high schools. I was unsuccessful, and the coordinator of health and PE couldn't get them to respond to my request at that time. The day after that meeting in September, one of the supervisors contacted me. I gave him information about my situation. He said he'd get back to me. And I, after five weeks, I emailed, texted him, asked him how things were going, and didn't get any communications. Haven't got any communications from this supervisor for now eight or nine weeks. And it's interesting, because this title is Supervision of Communications and Engagement. That's my story.
Thank you, Mr. Nash.
Our next speaker is Josie Schleicher.
Hello, my name is Josie Schleicher, and I am a sixth grader here at Berkeley Middle School. My lacrosse teammates and I all love lacrosse and want to continue it into high school and art. We all hope that by the time we're in high school, we get to, I'm sorry. We all hope that when we get to high school, lacrosse is an official varsity sport. We hope you can find room in the budget to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schleicher.
Our next speakers are, the next five are Kalen Schleicher, CJ Schleicher, Ellery Nester, Lydia Harrell, and Jason Mizuma.
Hello, my name is Kalen Schleicher, and I'm an eighth grader here at Berkeley Middle School. I have been playing for the Williamsburg Warriors since I was in kindergarten, and I also am fortunate enough to play for a travel team of enrichment. As you know, lacrosse is one of the fastest-growing youth sports in America. Yet, WJCC still doesn't have lacrosse as a VHSL sport. If my friends and I want to reach our goals, including playing lacrosse in college, we need a varsity lacrosse program. Did you know, women's high school lacrosse players have the second-highest percentage of continuing their athletic careers through college? To put that into perspective, about one in eight girls who play lacrosse in high school will play lacrosse in college. That percent is much higher than soccer, field hockey, swimming, or any other varsity sport available in the WJCC district. Without a VHSL lacrosse program, many girls will miss out on this opportunity. Thank you for your time and support. Please vote to approve lacrosse as a VHSL sport. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schleicher.
Our next speaker is CJ Schleicher.
Good evening. I'm CJ Schleicher. Those are my daughters right there, and I'm pretty proud of the way they spoke tonight. I wrote a bunch down, and one of the things I was going to end my speech, whatever, my statement with, was a comment that I felt like at times, this is a really intimidating situation. So for all these people that are getting behind me and standing up and talking, it's applause for them. But one of my comments was going to be, I feel like when we came here in the spring and we spoke to you guys, I didn't feel like there was any feedback. So to hear the superintendent say about lacrosse being considered and the discussions that are going along with that, it's very encouraging to hear that. And I just wanted to point a few things out about our experience as lacrosse parents and as parents in Williamsburg. It seems to me that there are, every year, at the Warriors, the rec program here in Williamsburg, that's kindergarten through eighth, there's more than 200 kids that participate. So I believe that the interest is there. When you look at a program like Jamestown's high school field hockey program, apparently, they had ninety girls try out for the field hockey program. They got forty spots. There's interest in this era that we live in that's dominated by screens. Kids want to get out. They want to play with their friends, and they want to compete. And I really would hope that you guys consider the benefits of that when you're making your decisions. I understand we're going to come up here and seem a bit like a broken record. Maybe that's our, maybe that's our point. But I really would appreciate your consideration of it, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schleicher.
Our next speaker is Ellery Nester.
Good evening. My name is Ellery Nester, and I'm a seventh grader here at Berkeley Middle School. I think it is very fitting that we are holding this meeting in a middle school as we are arguably the most impacted group of students that will ultimately be affected by the decision to make lacrosse a high school sport. As you hear from a lot of students, lacrosse is one of the fastest-growing sports across America today. We are simply asking the school board to align with the growing trend to create more opportunities for student athletes, as a lot of us have hopes and dreams to be a scholarship student athlete in college. Thank you for your consideration in adding lacrosse to a high school sport.
Thank you, Ms. Nester.
Our next speaker is Linda Harrell.
Hi, my name is Linda Harrell. I moved here about eighteen months ago. And the reason I'm here tonight is this is my first election season here, and I have received some election materials that are very disturbing. My member of the Board of Supervisors refers to our school system as being excellent. And all I can look at is a sixty-six point three-one percent pass rate, the third-grade reading that leaves 284 kids behind, and I don't think that's excellent. So I took your description of your meeting two weeks ago, the school board notes for the student achievement update, and I uploaded it into Microsoft Pilot, because I wanted to see what an artificial intelligence thought about this. So listen carefully, please. It reads like a textbook example of institutional deflection, polished, vague, and strategically evasive. Here's the breakdown of what it's doing and what it's avoiding. What it says and what it doesn't say. Comprehensive update suggests transparency but offers no actual data. No mention of the sixty-six point three-one percent third-grade pass rate or the downward trend since 2012. Celebrating strong areas, a classic PR move. Highlight the bright spots to distract from the systemic failures. Recognizing opportunities for continued growth. Euphemism for "we're underperforming, but we won't admit it." Outperforming the state average. Technically possible, but misleading if the state average itself is low. It's like bragging about being the tallest kid in a shrinking class. Targeted supports are in place. Vague assurance without accountability. What supports? What outcomes? What timeline? Elevate 28 strategic plan. A long-term
Thank you, Ms. Harrell.
that conveniently delays
Our next speaker is Jason, is Jason Mizuma.
Hey, everybody. Hi. So I'm excited. I had to like scratch out a bunch of my speech after hearing that lacrosse is on your radar, so thank you for that. So I'm still going to muddle through, because I know we're all working to do what's best for the students, and we have plenty of support back there. But this time around, we decided to leave at least our players at home, because a lot of ruckus last time, and we don't want to put you through that again. So I figured I'd spare you that. So my son spoke here, you know, last spring with his teammates. Couldn't be here tonight because he had a late football practice. And he's a senior. He just did Lafayette's homecoming and, you know, had a blast with his friends, and he's already talking about going to Lafayette's prom in the spring, and he loves it there. But did I mention that he's at Hampton Roads Academy's football practice this year? And he decided to transfer there this year because they restarted varsity football and lacrosse. And he was recruited to play lacrosse along with football, and he was offered a very generous financial aid package that made that possible. And part of me didn't love that decision, because, you know, I respectfully disagree with young Ms. Nester. This impacts a lot of people, including seniors, not just middle school people. So he made that decision. He wants to play in college, and he will. But every college coach we've spoken to said the same thing, that playing in a legitimate sanctioned league matters. And unless you can supplement with expensive travel teams that cost thousands of dollars a year, which limits the accessibility of the sport to many of our student athletes locally. I spoke to that point last year. We need to just get this done. And again, I hear you. You're working on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mizuma. Thank you.
Our next five speakers are Jordan Washington, Rich Warfield, Collins Warfield, Patrick Grisel, and Jackson Dietrich.
Sorry, this is my first time doing this. How are you guys doing? My name is Jordan Washington. I come down from Washington, DC. I am the regional manager at USA Lacrosse, which is the national governing body for the sport of lacrosse for the United States of America. I represent the Mid-Atlantic region, which means I represent the states of Maryland, West Virginia, the District of Columbia, Delaware, and the beautiful state of Virginia. I was invited out here today, obviously, as we're hearing a million times today, we want to get lacrosse here in the area. It's important for us on a national level. We represent, you know, like I said, the entire area. I'm working everywhere from like Northern Virginia. I go out to Norfolk, tomorrow, Petersburg, Virginia Beach. I'll be in Roanoke across the state next week. And we're really trying to make an emphasis on the sport of lacrosse specifically in the Virginia region. I coach at Howard University as well. I'm the head coach for their men's program, so we work a lot in terms of like growing
Madam Chair, point of order.
Oh, I apologize.
Since you're not a resident of James City County, Williamsburg.
I can walk away, yeah.
Yeah.
That's totally fine.
You can send your comments to the clerk.
Yeah, that's, I didn't know the rules. I apologize, guys.
We missed it. I apologize.
Oh, no, you're totally fine. Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Our next speaker is Rich Warfield.
My name is Rich Warfield, proud father of three girls, all of whom are multi-sport athletes here in Williamsburg, James City County. Our girls have been part of the Williamsburg Warriors recreational lacrosse league for the past four years, and have had the opportunity to coach many of the various and have had the opportunity to coach many of the various girls' age groups out there on the fields. Each year, there's several hundred kids from the Williamsburg Warriors organization that are out there every spring. There is a desire. There is a demand very present here in Williamsburg, James City County. As a coach of the Warriors, I've seen many of the girls in the game of lacrosse. They create new friends, see them celebrate the wins, console each other during the losses. But most of all, it's the confidence that I see them gain on the field with each other that I really enjoy. And I think that that is going to stick with them for years to come. On spring Saturdays, the Warriors teams play rec teams from our neighboring counties and communities, almost all of which have lacrosse as a VHSL sport. It's time that Williamsburg, James City County joins them. The desire for lacrosse to be a VHL sport is strongly represented during one of these meetings last spring. There were several folks on that board that advocated that they would push for lacrosse. Did hear some promising news at the start of this meeting, but I would ask, are you following through on those words? Are you really honoring what you stated you were going to do? For years, there's been rumors that lacrosse will be a VHL sport here in Williamsburg, James City County. I think it's time to stop the rumors, make VHSL sport lacrosse a sport here in the county and better the girls' and boys' experience in high school. So thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Warfield. Our next speaker is Collins Warfield.
Hi, my name is Collins Warfield and I'm a freshman at War Hill High School. I've been playing lacrosse since I was nine years old. I also play lacrosse for a travel team in Richmond. I know having a lacrosse as a VHSL sport would be a good decision because I know people who are interested in playing lacrosse in high school but don't want to put money into something that they are new to. Many players that do not have the funds and transportation are left out and do not get the chance to play lacrosse. Lacrosse is the fastest growing sport in the United States as well as Virginia. A lot of Virginia schools offer lacrosse in high school as a VHSL sport. Many of my teammates on my travel lacrosse team already have lacrosse in their high schools. So let's stop talking about it and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warfield. Our next speaker is Patrick Grizzle. Patrick Grizzle, is he still here? Our next speaker is Jackson Dietrich. Okay. All right. Our next three speakers are Robin Wooton, Marco Sardi, and Morgan Monroe.
Good evening. Robin Jester-Wooton. Earlier this year, Williamsburg, James City County School Board insisted that they would take part in educating the community about the names of our schools. I have not yet heard of such plans. So a group of parents, historians, scholars, and community leaders are currently working on a project called "What's in the Name?", the Schools of WJCC, in which we will tell the stories of all 16 names and what they mean. This project will produce a children's book as well as a website for the community to interact with the research. Our goal is giving students of all ages the tools to better understand what it means to honor and celebrate people of the past without sacrificing integrity and truth. We are strongly committed to not erasing, diminishing, nor distorting history. And we will continue to fight for the values and principles to which our community aspires. These include the priorities that our schools outline, such as social and emotional well-being, a culture of communication, and mutual trust for all stakeholders. As a mom of WJCC students, I believe strongly in the work of public education and not just calling out, but calling the community in. To pursue knowledge and understanding, to listen not just to majority opinion, but to honestly and respectfully engage those who are often dismissed and whose well-being seems to cost us too much. The issue of Blair and Magruder is not going away. As we approach the 250th celebration, it becomes more important than ever to get our history right. If we are to be the bearers of truth and light here in the historic triangle, we must not concede to shallow performance of history that miss so much of the truth about the development of this great nation. But instead, we must renew our commitment.
Thank you, Ms. Wooton. Thank you. Our next speaker is Marco Sardi.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kiefer. My name is Marco Sardi. I'm a member of WJCA and a teacher at James Bar Middle School, and I'm speaking as an individual tonight. I wanted to speak today about the upcoming safety standards being implemented at the middle school and high school levels this year and some resulting confusion from that implementation. Waiting until October to notify our principals of that updated change to how events will function and be more safe for all of our residents contains an unfortunate oversight due to, I believe, a misunderstanding with the day-to-day operations of our related arts department. Even though events held at the middle school level will have time to prepare for a spring implementation, events for the year are scheduled by September 1st or earlier, with many of those events taking place from middle school students at high schools. There was some confusion this week over how some new costs would impact these events, who would be responsible for ensuring security in the first place, and whether event times would need to be adjusted to account for these security changes. For example, checking 100 instrument cases would be a significant change. I believe if there's clear communication with the fine arts coordinator and staff on how teachers need to communicate with admin about division's safety needs and how to schedule those things in advance, it will ensure compliance and front events as smoothly as possible. I'd also like to ensure the division is prepared to create a budget item to absorb the cost of these measures since charging schools individually will put pressure on the arts to begin charging admission for traditionally free events to the public if principals begin to need to justify these expenses. As we are seeing at the state level, a hasty implementation can be sometimes worse than a slower implementation and can leave educators feeling off guard. I hope we can ensure a clear picture can be painted for our student performers to give them every opportunity they need to succeed this year. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sardi. And our final speaker is Morgan Monroe.
Hello, my name is Morgan and I'm also here to talk about lacrosse. Thank you for coming to the games last season for Lafayette. It was really nice to see everybody out there. And then I have four boys. I have a six and an eight-year-old that have a little bit more time before VHSL is important to them. But I have a senior that is gonna miss it and I'm kind of bummed because last year he could've graduated at 16 and he waited till 17 in hopes that there would be VHSL. Overall, that'll be fine, but it would've been nice to have the opportunity for him. And then also the other nice part about not being VHSL last year was that my eighth grader got to play for Lafayette. And I guess that's mostly who I'm here for in a way because he's playing again as a freshman and he's got a little bit of time. And I hope that that can be seen through by the time he's ready to graduate. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. All right. Thank you again for everyone that came out and waited. We do appreciate your comments and your patience. We will move on to our consent agenda. It consists of six items. We have 7.01, approval of financial report and monthly bills and payroll for September 2025. 7.02, approval of minutes from the regular meeting on 9/16/25. 7.03, approval of minutes from the work session on 10/7/25. 7.04, approval of minutes from the joint meeting on 10/10/25. 7.05, approval of Resolution R 21-25, National School Psychology Week. And 7.06, approval of Resolution R 22-25, Native American Heritage Month. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffel?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
And then our first action item, item 8.01, approval of personnel actions. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Ms. Mills?
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffel?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
8.02, approval of amendment to FY26 Grants Fund Budget. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the amendment to the FY26 Grants Fund Budget to $7,028,876.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffel?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
Item 8.03, approval of budget transfer request for special education services. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the budget transfer request for special education services in the amount of $940,000.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffel?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
Approval, oh, sorry, 8.04, approval of purchase request for the Lafayette High School serving line replacement.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the purchase request for the Lafayette High School serving line replacement to craft food service equipment for a total cost of $154,981.55.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffel?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mrs. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
Sorry about that. All right, 8.05, approval of decision regarding student case number 2526-002. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to uphold the recommendation for expulsion in student case code 2526-002 and to authorize the superintendent to establish conditions for early reentry.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffel?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mrs. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
And finally, item 8.06, approval of decision regarding student case number 2425-016. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation for readmittance in student case code 2425-016.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffel?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
All right, we are at board member comments. Mr. Hosang, can I start with you?
Yes, ma'am. First, I'd like to thank the students and parents that came out for our, to push for high school lacrosse. I will say that we are in the process of trying to get that done, as the superintendent mentioned earlier tonight. We're hopeful that we can get everything accomplished. We can get, hopefully our funding partners will assist us in resurfacing Cooley Field. But we are hopeful that that will take place very soon. Fingers crossed and we'll wait and see what happens in the future with that. This next issue I want to discuss, I'm fairly hesitant to raise. But we've had individuals raise this to us through emails. It's been on social media. And it's time that it's addressed by this board. It affects the entire school board. It affects the school system. It's an issue where we have a candidate for a state position who discussed or tweeted or texted about killing a political rival and then also killing children. We have someone in our school system who has endorsed that individual. It has been brought to our attention that people are not happy with that endorsement, with that issue. We have regulations. We have policies. We have guidance. And we can also use common sense in issues like this. In my opinion, I think it brings a discredit to not only the individual but to this entire school board and every member of the school administration for an endorsement of someone of that caliber. And it cannot remain unaddressed. It needs to be brought forward. Again, there's been multiple individuals who have raised this issue with the school board and through the district, and they're asking for our support for how can we have someone in our school district that endorses someone who calls for the murder of children when we're supposed to be protecting children? We're supposed to be teaching children. We're supposed to be helping children. And we have someone in our school system that publicly endorsed this individual. We have parents and citizens who have the right to be concerned if we do not speak up against this. I will say that I am extremely happy and glad that my girls are out of the school system at this point. If this is the type of stuff that we're gonna be going on, that's gonna be going on in our school system. They, parents and citizens, trust us to teach our children. If they believe that we support killing children, I think that support is gonna go away from our citizens and our parents. Within reason, we all have a private, and we can all have private and personally held beliefs. But when one associates their beliefs with being a school board member or with being a member of the school district, it falls on all of us. And the school board in this district will be associated with that belief. And so I'm here to say that, at least for me, I am not standing up for that belief. I am not part of that crowd or that group. And I'd like to say that this, I would like to say that this is a one-time issue, that this is, that we can just sort brushes under the table and let it go, but it's not. This has happened repeatedly and we, as a school board, have not raised this issue. It's been dealt internally. Now that it's being brought forward by other members of our community, it's time for us to speak out. This employee is using their position within the school district to push a political agenda, which is not something that we can do as a school board. We have members of this school board that are running for reelection and I've not seen one person talk about that, except one. Let me rephrase it. One person has talked about it. We have all maintained our, we've all maintained our neutrality, I guess, in this. And that's what school board members are. We're not Republicans. We're not Democrats. We're not independents. We maintain our neutrality. And I'm sorry to say that the one person currently has not done that. And they've been repeatedly warned and it still continues. And I can't stand for that anymore. My hope is that the citizens, the parents, students can look beyond one person's endorsement and still trust us to adequately educate Williamsburg, James City County students. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Mrs. Hunley?
First, I want to thank Ms. Aller for sending out a message like for all of us. I don't know if you all realize that a message goes out to principals saying, you know, school board members would like to come in and see what children are doing and what you're doing. And then she has to coordinate that, like 16 schools, and look at all our schedules. And we put down the dates and the times that we're available. Because that's what brings me the most joy, is getting into the school. I know there's a song, "Boots on the Ground," but it's good to go and see who really has the boots on the ground, to see what the students are doing, to see what the teachers are teaching, to see what the challenges are for the administrators. And I'm happy that we have that type of relationship. And I'm happy that we have that type of relationship, that we can honestly have those conversations with administration and teachers, they feel comfortable, they trust us, and, and we look, we take that um, information and we don't just sit on it. We, we have two-by-ones with Dr. Kever and we say, this is what we're hearing and, and um, how can we help to alleviate that? I am so pleased to have been able to get into um, Clairebird Baker, D J Montague, Blair, Matthew Whaley, Lafayette, Manufacturing Day, and um, there was a young man that was a Lafayette graduate that was working at the pack and ship place. He started out four years ago at forty-one thousand dollars and now he's at seventy thousand dollars and he was, he was able to talk to our students about that. It, it's, it's just um, something that, that I think is very important, that I know sometimes we hear things that are going on in the schools, but I like to be able to um, see, you know, exactly and ask those questions and then be able to report back to you all if it's something that's founded or not founded. And for what I have seen, just in the couple of weeks that I have been in school and for what I've heard, our students and our teachers are doing amazing things. All the new teachers, we have intentionally met with new teachers who say, this, the launch program is successful, I have a mentor, um, I'm doing a great job and, 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 and we look at them and we say, and, and you're gonna stay right, and they're like, yes. So, we're not only about the recruitment, but the retention and one young man, Ms. Chen will be a witness to this, we shook his hand, we're like, y- yes, you, you're gonna stay. And he said, yes, we said, we need a handshake on that, and I told him I will hunt him down if he decides not to stay. But um, I'm just saying that we have some amazing things going on and I'm proud to sit here and represent that kind of business to be in. So, that's all my comments, Madam Chair. I'm just joyful to be in the schools.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Hunley. We jump over to Dr. Cavazos?
Really?
And come up the other side? Yeah, really.
I was getting ready, I wasn't ready for this one. Okay, um, I, I will admit, I, I'm not an expert in the topic of literacy, and perhaps I shouldn't discuss the subject from my disadvantaged position. However, it seems from reading an article provided to me by one of my colleagues, um, that the literacy experts can't agree on the best way to teach children how to read. Apparently, the clash between the proponents of different ways to teach children how to read is quite vigorous. From my perspective, having raised six children and witnessing their successful reading habits, which they passed on to my grandchildren, I can say without doubt that um, reading to and with, parents reading to and with their children is paramount, and phonics is a vital component of the education of literacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Ms. Chen?
Um, I just want to start um, by expressing my huge thank you to um, Dr. Kever and to Vice Chair Donner and to Chair Ordigo for your representation of our board and our school division and our families and students and staff's best interest in terms of negotiating our joint contract. It was an effort that I don't think a lot of people realize, um, the, the amount of time and that you put into it and the amount of care and, and how you really did make that happen for us to stay together and to have um, certainty moving forward. So, I do think, I do truly believe that the three of you, you know, were the right people for, to lead us in that effort, um, so just wanna say thank you and, and I've only heard great things from, feedback from others who, who are relieved, um, and, and just very grateful for, for all that you've, you did to represent us in that and, and being part of that joint contract. And then very quickly, I'll mention, um, just to piggyback, um, the same sort of joy that uh, Ms. Hunley has already expressed so well. I, I too, um, love getting into the schools and I think that the more that we spend time in the schools with our staff and teachers and support staff and, and everybody, um, and our students, um, that that's where we can really learn and, um, and get a good sense of, of all that's going so well in our schools and how we are keeping um, students safe and they are learning and thriving. And so I was privileged to be able to read in Laurel Lane Elementary School last week as well as Matthew Whaley Elementary School, um, and I had some amazing encouraging visits um, at Lafayette High School just today with um, with uh, sorry. Um, yes, was there, I was, with Chair Ordigo. And also, I was at um, D J Montague with um, Ms. Hunley and um, also at Jamestown High School with Ms. Ordigo. So, um, we, we got to see many things and um, this has been a long night, so I, I won't go into the details, uh, but just wanted to say that I do appreciate those experiences. Um, and that's all.
Madam Chair? Thank you, Ms. Chen. Mr. Riffle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start with something good. The evening on the lawn was a great time. The amount of money raised for our students and scholarship and stuff is commendable. Um, I think Mr. Dr. Cavazos has a donation that he does not know about, but that's that. You shouldn't leave your paddle leaving around, you know, like, it's on you. Um, but no, it was a great night to celebrate his division and, and this, our students and our community come together for, for a higher purpose. I want to address a concern we heard during some comments earlier today. Um, I just wanna say thank you to those who came out to speak. Uh, I appreciate the work that our students are doing to push for the things they want like lacrosse, um, but the current standards from our community when they challenge what's going on in school, like curriculum or literacy and those things, often people have found a way to, to comment and, you know, our school pages are, um, as individuals, and they're critical of, you know, the progress we make every day, like I posted about our pre-K facilities and I would, there I said, I wish they would just teach the curriculum instead of this mess or something. And I was like, do you not know what goes on every day in a two-hundred-million-dollar school division? I don't know. Um, and I suggested to them they should come volunteer and see the impact that our educators do every day. That's what we should be doing on this board, is defending education and defending what happens in this room is, you know, progress and we spent the time in a meeting that was really important about individuals of our division's progress, and that just concerns me, our, our, we see headlines, or we hear something, or we read, all these things. Progress is every day in this division, it's not, you know, when it comes out in a slideshow and we're not satisfied. And that's what I have to say about that. Um, the last thing I'll, what to say, I got to dress up and go to the, work with Ms. Hunley on, to go to the print pack, and it was great to see our students um, on a field trip without their phones and they're enjoying seeing how plastic cups are made. Um, they looked at how K cups were developed and talked about the industry jobs that are available here in our locality. So, a real shout-out to the teachers who chaperoned and went and the economic development folks, um, along with um, our students who, you know, they took in the moment. I think it was fun to watch them put up in the P P E gear and really listen to the instructors and the people in the facility, um, and listen to the student who brought their testimony to us, that was really valued and I really wanna appreciate to our community and our partners that, I know this happens more often than we suggest from the board, but Manufacturing Days and those things are every year, um, and it's something that we can be proud of is showcasing these things. The one suggestion, I think our students said that they wanna see this sooner, and that's always a hard thing to do when it comes to scoring and testing in middle school, but um, the work we do every day for our students is abundantly clear to members of this board and I wanna say thank you to our educators for the hard work they put in so far. I know it's end of a quarter and, and then there's report cards and then things coming out, it's, it's a busy time, but I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Donner?
Thank you. Uh, we had quite a wonderful weeks, or two weeks in between our last meeting and this one. Uh, I want to give a shout-out to the W J C C Schools Foundation, they put on an amazing uh, ten-year anniversary event and I was just seeing that they raised over fifty-six thousand dollars, which goes directly back into our schools, supporting teachers, uh, supporting our students, and so I am just so grateful to the community that is so generous and allows us, or allows the, the foundation to be able to support our teachers. I also had fun with the revolution of reading and enjoyed going to Laurel Lane Elementary School. I um, went off-script and I took a book that they actually had in the class and we had so much fun. I got booed by the students. Apparently, I was, uh, apparently my rapping skills are not very good, but to the point around literacy is I was in a room of second graders and so I showed them the passages and we went around and kid by kid raised their hand to read those passages back with a bit more rhyming skills than I have at this age. And so I would just say like, yes, we have a ways to go and our kids are bright and they're engaged and we asked lots of questions. We even did some breakdancing and my husband's like, are you sure that was a good idea? I was like, I did like a yoga side-stand, but um, just to see the enthusiasm around our kids. And then lastly, I think, you know, as, as adults, if you're all looking, like, we're all wearing orange because this is um, anti-bullying week and it's standing up for bullying is tomorrow, and I think it's just so important that, you know, we instill this in our children, that we, you know, everyone, right, when they come to classroom, we call them friends and talk to your friend and how is your friend and is, and check in on your friend, and I think as adults, a lot of times we need to remember that and really um, emulate what we want in our children and our students, and I think particularly as we sit here on, on the dais in a, in a public spot for two hours or three hours, um, using this platform to really make sure that we are not, that we are um, leading the way in how we treat each other, how we think about our, um, all of our students, how we care for all of them, how we care for our faculty, how we care for our employees and how we care for each other as board members. So, I am proud to wear this orange and I will wear it again tomorrow. Those are my claims.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Um, I know it's late, so I will, I will wrap up quickly. Um, October has been a really great month for our school division. It's been a lot going on and a lot of, a lot of um, things in the, in the headlines, not the least of which is the joint contract, and I do wanna extend um, a thank you to our funding partners in both the City of Williamsburg and Jamestown County and all the individuals who were part of, of the negotiating team. It, it took as long as it took, but we, it, the most important thing is that we have a good, solid product and that we were able to deliver um, an improved situation and certainty to our school division, a school division that's gonna stay together and we will be stronger together for it. So, I do also wanna thank everyone who was involved with that. And this has, this is the season for getting into schools. Mrs. Hunley mentioned Ms. Aller's heroic effort to come up with a master schedule, which I don't even wanna know how she does it, but, but I have enjoyed um, not, not only reading in schools as part of the V A two-fifty Reading Revolution at Laurel Lane and C B B, but I've also been to Berkeley Middle School, Jamestown High School, Matthew Whaley Elementary School, Clairebird Baker and um, Lafayette High School so far. Uh, there are more on the calendar and I look forward to Manufacturing Days, there's another one at the end of this week. And it really is a wonderful experience to get into the schools and I wanna thank all the principals who take time to walk with us and talk with us and show us um, different aspects of their schools that they wanna highlight and take time, they have a very, very hard and full-time job and they take time to answer our questions. The people that I have been at the schools with, I know that I speak for all seven of us when I say we truly are interested in understanding the needs, the challenges, the highs, the lows, the success stories, the, the areas um, that we need to support more. So, we, we genuinely want to know, we care about the staff, we care about the students, we wanna understand the different dynamics at the different schools and, so that's why we do these visits, and it's not just to show off people walking down the hall or to, to be a kind of a dog and pony show. We, we genuinely care and we wanna hear um, your successes, because successes aren't always highlighted, but we also wanna hear your concerns, um, and we take them very seriously. And um, last night I also attended um, the one-act plays at Lafayette High School, it was Lafayette High School and Berkeley Middle School combined, they each did a, a one-act. I think they're all going to a competition um, soon and they, it was mind-blowing, it, it was really, really good and I'm, I'm so glad I got to see that. Unfortunately, we are all missing um, Jamestown and Hornsby who are doing it tonight, so I did get, get to see Mr. Stone last night and tell him not to be offended, but we did. I kinda all have to show up for this one, so. Um, but yeah, that, there are really phenomenal things happening in our schools. We are aware of, of the gaps and we have publicized them and we have talked about them twice in one week, um, at the beginning of October. And it takes, it takes time to turn a big ship and especially when there are many hurdles and changes and new challenges that have been tossed into the mix, just even if you just look at the last two years from, from things that happened within our own school division, superintendent turnover to the um, looming potential now off-the-table county-city split, to changes that the state is making almost on a daily basis, it seems, and so we, we are aware of what we need to focus on and we have many now critical components in place to be able to move forward. And um, and I am confident that we will see the fruits of a lot of the labor that has gone on over the last, you know, two to four years will start to come to bear and I look forward to that. And so I thank all the teachers and staff, um, who worked tirelessly to do the very best for every student and we really genuinely cheer and champion every single student and their success. And then again, I do wanna thank everyone for, for coming out and being so patient. I, I know it's not fun to sit for an hour, but we, we were taking care of something very important that could change the trajectory of someone's life, so we, we did have to take the time, but thank you. All right, our upcoming events, we have just the Career Ready Advisory Committee that's meeting on October twenty-second at three-thirty P M. at James Blair Middle School Media Center. And that seems to be the only event right now. And on our upcoming meetings, our next meeting will be on November eleventh, closed session will begin at four P M. in room three-hundred of the annex, the school board office, and work followed by work session and action items, also November eleventh, that will be at four-thirty, room three-hundred in the annex of the school board office. And after that, for November, on November eighteenth, closed session will begin at six P M. here in room two-hundred at Berkeley Middle School, followed by the regular meeting with public hearing on the C I P, um, Critical Infrastructure Projects, and that is also on the eighteenth at six-thirty P M. at Berkeley Middle School Auditorium where we are sitting right now. All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned.